We have a couple of proclamations for this evening. The first one is for the National Travel and Tourism Week, so do we have some individuals who'd like to come up for that one? And Megan, I'm gonna, Amber, I'm gonna hand the mic to you a second if you'd like to introduce everybody.
Hello, I'm Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is Megan Gilliland, our Economic Development Coordinator, and Judy Shelton is part of our Tourism Committee.
Whereas travel has a positive effect on Bonner Springs and the state's economic prosperity, and whereas tourism is an economic driver, a business recruitment tool, and a building block for state and community pride for Bonner Springs, and whereas travel to and throughout Kansas provides significant annual economic benefits for the state, generating more than $9.4 billion in direct and indirect business sales, including $6 billion spent directly by travelers, and whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth with travelers spending directly generating tax revenues of more than $589 million for state and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs, and whereas the travel industry is the 12th largest employer in the state of Kansas, directly supporting more than 53,000 jobs, and whereas tourism is the welcome committee for capital investment in Kansas, and whereas the travel industry is the heartbeat of our community and businesses, inviting visitors from around the globe to enjoy the experiences that only Bonner Springs can offer, and whereas welcoming visitors from near and far has always been and always will be the enduring spirit of the travel industry in Kansas. Now, therefore, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, does hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022 as National Travel and Tourism Week in Bonner Springs, and urge the citizens of Bonner Springs to join me and the special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. And actually, I'm gonna need it back. Would you, anybody would like to say anything?
Oh, I just had a couple of comments.
Make sure that's on.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much, Council, for recognizing Travel and Tourism Week in Bonner Springs. It's a great day, actually, to have this proclamation because by my estimation, we had about 21,800 people visit the city of Bonner Springs this weekend through three events alone. That is an incredible economic impact generator for our community. When you consider the number of attractions and events in Bonner Springs, which brings people to our city, this is a significant economic impact. Azure Amphitheater was sold out, 18,000 people. Barnyard Babies provided me with a preliminary estimate of 3,500 attendees, and Zip KC hosted one of their smaller events, Ultimate Field Day, on Sunday, April 24th, with approximately 300 people participating. So let's move forward and continue building great attractions. In front of you, Council, is your new downtown, or is your new Bonner Springs business and shopping map and attractions, which will be going out to all the businesses and attractions in our city.
Thank you very much, Megan, and everyone else. Next, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Who would like to come up here? Wires. I don't forget, I may, okay, would you like to announce?
What's that?
My name is Judy Cox. We have Karen Baxter, we have Ted Stoffus, we have Jack Graff, and of course, Justine Speach, who keeps us all in line as much as she possibly can.
Mentioned that three of these individuals are on part of the Bonner Beautiful Committee, and it is a volunteer organization that really works hard to do, to do a lot of the great things for our city to keep it beautiful. Whereas, in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed when more than a million trees were planted in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees provide many benefits to our environment, and whereas since 1986, the city of Bonner Springs has planted 1,747 trees along our streets, in our parks, in our cemetery, and on school grounds, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic viability of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, does hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022 as Arbor Day in the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and to plant trees for present and future generations. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Arbor Day, while we celebrate it every year, it gets kind of pushed back to the back burner a lot of times, but this year particularly, we're trying to rev that back up. We've always tried to include the grade school kids in what we do. This year, they're all gonna get tattoos. Not sure that's what the parents wanted, but that's what they're gonna get. And then we're planting another tree over at the high school, back next to the tennis courts on Friday also, so, and we've been doing this for 35 years now, so that's awesome.
Thank you. I do want to clarify, those are not permanent tattoos, correct?
Yeah. Oh, they're not permanent, right? Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary, and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the council tonight on any item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. First up, then, would be the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is the minutes of the April 11th, 2022 city council meeting, claims for city operations, messy, or massage therapy business establishment and therapist license renewal for Yang Lu back and body massage, appointments to boards and commissions, and the first quarter of 2022 financial reports. The staff wish to pull anything? Anyone from the audience wish to pull any item? Council, pulling items, or any quick questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, or Acting Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Reeves, and a second by Counselor Shannon. All, please.
Long?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I answer for you, you answer for me, so. She'll get it straightened out. Onto new business. We have the 2022 Annual Mowing Services. Awarding the bid on that, staff, presentation?
Thank you. I'm Matt Beetz, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight, we're bringing forward the bid for the 2022 Annual Mowing Services. This covers approximately 29 properties around town. We're recommending Lawnforce, who's mowed for us for the last two, three years, I believe, now, doing the same process, and, uh, that's about it. Thanks for your questions, mowing grass.
Is that it? I guess it not hold a lot to mowing grass, right?
He gave us figures and, yeah.
Staff have anything else to add? If not, anybody from the audience wish to participate, comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve awarding the bid for the 2022 Annual Mowing Services to Lawnforce.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Gurley, and a second by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? We can start down here with Mr. Reeves.
Nothing to add here.
Significant difference in those bid prices.
Yeah, they always have been.
And how does that compare to their last year cost for the same company?
It's gone up a smidge, but not a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is, yeah.
I assume, as usual, even though they do other, other work that you might have, if you have some additional cleanup, or, you know, limbs, things like that, they do provide those other services as well.
We've never required, asked them to do that.
Okay.
This is, they're strictly mowing, they, they, we, they have this on a schedule, they're here like two days a week, mow every, all 29 properties within.
So we don't use it for any other services, just?
Just this mowing contract, this mowing contract.
With that, then, if there's nothing else from anyone, city clerk, if you'll call, roll, please.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for the 2022 Annual Mowing Services to Lawnforce, Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto the next item, 2022 Street Resurfacing Project. Since you're still up there, Mr. Beetz, I'm assuming that is you again?
Believe it or not, it is. This one here is our annual resurfacing program, and we had five contractors submit bids for this. This is a little bit different. We request in our bid packet that they give us basically a firm price. There was two contractors that actually submitted what was called an index price. That allows them to fluctuate the price as oil and fuel changes throughout, and we use a request that we want a fixed price on that. As you'll see, there was one contractor that was quite a bit lower, his was indexed, and we, when I contacted him, spoke with him about it, and he could not guarantee that he'd hold his price once we got ready to start the project, so it was possibly gonna go up if fuel costs keep going up, so. He actually, when I said, well, we really need to have a fixed price on this, he, he chose to bow out, so he has withdrew his bid from this. We went to the next contractor, which is Mackinany, and Mackinany has done work for us many times over the past, my career here anyways, and they've always done a great job for us, so we're not concerned with them at all doing the work. They're more aligned with a lot of the other contractors as well, and price-wise, and our, our price, our estimate to do the work was around, I believe, around $750, I believe, for this year's work. The additional money we have left over, we'll either use it for a full-depth patching, so if we've got locations around that have some, you'll see like some base failures, we can use, we've got money, we asked for a price from the contractors, even though it's not included in this, to do that work, so we actually had a bid price to do it. It's where they'll go in, they'll take out like six to eight inches of the asphalt base, and then replace it back in. And other than that, we also still have our Reclamite program, which is our preventative maintenance portion that we do on streets as well, so. Other than that, I'll answer any questions.
Staff, anyone wish to add anything else?
Now, Matt, if you include the memo that also went through, we said are being done correctly. Oh, and I believe, last council meeting, we did a presentation on it. This is the exact same street, it's all the same streets we presented to you last council meeting. I did not give them a map or a list in this one because of that.
Is that it? Okay, would anybody from the citizens like to speak on this item at all? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to award the bid for the 2022 Street Resurfacing Project to Mackinany Construction in the amount of $643,573.79.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Woods, and a second by Counselor Shannon. Discussion will start down here with you, Mr. Shannon.
Matt, is there any idea when, when this will start?
This will, when I spoke with Mackinany about it, they're ready to start it as soon as possible, so once we get through tonight, we'll start really getting, working on getting their bonds all in line and getting the contracts underway with them, and then they'll start. They want to get started when, as soon as they can before prices keep going up, and they're losing out for that, so.
Great, thank you.
Nothing coming in?
And did that low bid come in within the expectation range of what you were hoping for?
Mackinany's?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, I'm not surprised by that.
Good.
Will there be really good signs that warn people that we're coming up upon road resurfacing?
A lot of times, you can't miss these guys because there's a lot of stuff going on around.
Okay.
But, yeah, they will have pre.
Could you start, car starts one?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, look, Gurley?
Yes, on the, was it the Reclamite? The one where, okay, was that part of this bid, or was it the other, in the $200,000?
The Reclamite will be a different bid.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't let that yet. We needed to get this number in so we knew what we were working with, because, you know, if it would have been, if this would have been another couple hundred thousand dollars more, might not have had enough to actually put together a packet for this year.
I just wasn't sure, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, terms? If not, Chris, if you'd like to call for the vote.
Voting on a motion to award the bid for the 2022 Street Resurfacing Project, Mackinany Construction, in the amount of $643,573.79. Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
I should abstain from this call.
Motion passes.
And our last item is, we have an executive session we need to go into before I call for the motion, about how long should we expect? Mr. Peterson?
Uh, I think if you read the name, it's eight.
Eight-ten? So would you like me to read the motion, and then somebody can make the first, or would you like to read the full motion? Somebody, anybody?
Mr. President, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to the exemption for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, KSA 75-4319B6. Open meeting will resume in the council chamber at 8:10 PM.
Do we have a second? Okay, motion made by Counselor Gurley, second by Counselor Shannon. I'll just call for a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? And we'll, we'll be returning back here, at 8:10, we'll be coming back, you're more than welcome to stay, because we will be returning to council chambers when we're done. You want to entertain yourselves for a while? You want to entertain yourselves for a while?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to resume the open meeting with no action taken at eight eleven.
Second. Okay. That was, the motion was made by Councilor Gurley and second by Councilor Shannon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I guess the ayes have it. Okay, on to reports. City managers' report.
Getting a lot of feedback on the community survey, or excuse me, the citizen's survey, and then the housing survey. These are both active but are shut down here pretty quickly, so please take advantage of that. I think they're all over town. So again, they're there, but the clock is ticking. Do want to recognize Jerry Wistoff. Wistoff is one of our plan operators. He did, or excuse me, our utility plan operators. He did pass his K D H E class two water certification last week. So again, we require, or required by the state to have class threes for both our water and wastewater plants. These are extremely difficult tests, so congratulations to him on that achievement. And then, lastly, just so everybody knows, I was elected to the NPR board for Kansas and the Board of Directors, so that'll be something I'll be taking part of moving forward for at least the next little while.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Just wanted you all to know, if you're looking for me, I might be at a board meeting now. But that includes all I have tonight.
So on to city council items. We'll start right here with you, Councilor Woods.
The reports were wonderful and gave us such an overview. Thank you.
Councilor Gurley?
Playground surface, there it is. Playground surface is being replaced at Lyons Park. Is that just at the end of its life, or has it been damaged?
So, we go through on a pretty frequent basis and have a third party come out and look at our facilities. This was an area of concern that they noted because it had some, oh, there were rips and tears in the surface, so that's the reason for it was, one, the age of it, but also because it's a liability concern that we just want to take care of now before it gets worse.
Is that a complete replacement, or is it patchable?
It's, at this point, I think that particular one, it's, I think it's original.
Is it five years old?
This one is...
On the new section of the playground?
Is it the new one? Yeah, and it's not patchable. Yeah, we looked at that. Yeah, it's, I think it's, at this point, one of those things that it's easier just to go in and completely replace everything.
I was just curious what the life cycle was on that.
Yeah.
And I also have had people asking me about Starbucks going into the old Burger King building, so I'm just putting it on public record that that's what's happening.
And the site work has begun.
And the site work has begun. Thank you.
Mike?
Couple of, I can hear really well without them. Spring Creek behind my house, it goes clear through the city, I think is a valuable asset to the city, but it's got some problems. Were you able to get any of those pictures loaded? While she's trying to do that, I also have some questions about the lawn at City Hall and the police station. Oh, here we go. You notice on the edges of the creek, there's some large rocks that are still, haven't disintegrated yet, but they will because of the kind of rock that they're made out of, there's shale. And you look further down the creek, is this the only one you got loaded? Okay. Look, you see this is the other side of the creek. You can see how the rock has slid down into the creek. That's going to keep the water from flowing down as well as it used to, plus it's going to cause more erosion on the outside of the creek, which is all trying to do already just on this end of where that rock fell down. And so, we really need to, you know, look at this, and work on trying to come up with a plan to redo sections of it, or all of it, from where it begins up at Metropolitan, clear down to Morris, yeah, clear down to Morris Street anyway. There's a lot of that where the rock is already disintegrated. When they put it in, there was nice big rocks that held it in place, but now there's a lot of them that have already disintegrated into just tiny little rocks and keep getting washed down the way every time we get a heavy rain. So, I'd like for that to get put up on the docket somehow, so something can get, start to be done on this, maybe in small sections of it per year or whatever, but I think it's really important to this asset. This protects a lot of property going through the city. And so, all right, enough on that. The lawn around City Hall and the police station, there's, I've seen lots of places where the lawn has been growing not quite as long as what we have here, and it's, they're doing really well. Several locations in Johnson County, I've seen around their facilities with some of the new buildings they have. I just, I'm kind of disappointed in what we've got. The lawn, particularly in front of this building, has never grown grass, and I thought the way they talked, in the beginning, they were talking about replacing that dirt. I mean, I thought they're going to scoop it out, put in some newer dirt, not newer dirt, put in some better dirt than what is there so that we could actually have a lawn out there. And so, I'm disappointed in that, and I'm not blaming it on city staff. I'm putting that back on the people that were in charge of that, and I feel like didn't do their job during the construction phases. Also, where are we on the code enforcement for property that's not being taken care of, like their lawns and so forth, exteriors of buildings? For instance, one of them I've been seeing is one fifty-nine Emerson.
Let me start with your first question. Spring Creek, that's a project that I think we need to talk about if we want to take that on as a project, as part of the budget. One of the issues that we have is we don't have easements back there to actually do much work. This goes back, as Councilman Reeves knows, years from when the city initially put, or did some stabilization along those banks. But again, I think if we want to take a look at that, the budget's a great opportunity to do that. The lawn, I can assure you, I've been nothing less than, oh, annoying about that particular issue with the contractor. I've asked on several occasions for a detailed timeframe as to when the remaining steps are to get done. Planting's has still not occurred, trees, bushes, flowers, grass, by the looks of things, no pre-immersion was put down either. But, again, that's something that we're working on. I know the last up that I got from KBS was that the subcontractor has been difficult to get, which are to have him show up and complete the work, unfortunately. You know, I don't know what to say to that, but again, we're trying everything we can to make sure that that gets done. And then, lastly, on the code side of things, Amber was getting up, so I'll let her kind of walk through exactly where that's at with the whole bit.
Should've just stayed still. So, you mentioned lawns. It's mowing season, so we have a couple of, we put out for rate sheets. We don't bid for that anymore. And so, the rate sheets allow us to call the first one if they're not available, then we move on to the second contractor. But we typically use the same company that Public Works does. And then, I'm not exactly sure which one, one fifty-nine Emerson is, but I think I've got an idea.
There's, along with the property there on Emerson, there's a couple others on East Second Street where it's not just the lawn, but it's the underbrush that's growing around there that not supposed to be there. It's just because the property hasn't been taken care of. This is just overgrown into a mess, not only these locations, but there's several around the city that I know that Mr. Stites is working with but not having much luck. And so, I just, I want to push that issue a little bit and see if we can't come to something. Initially, I thought that we could get these problems, if they're not going to take care of it, get put on their tax rolls so that there was some kind of punitive, something there to get them to move forward and take care of their property. And that doesn't seem to be happening. Is there a holdup on getting these properties, you know, after we've gone through all the steps? And we're not able to get them on the, you know, put that on their taxes so they take care of it, so we can take care of it, and then get paid back through the taxes or whatever? How's that?
So, I think there's a couple of different ways that we need to handle that. So, the underbrush, we are making some, Stites just went to a codes conference, so he has some new language that we're going to use for some of the underbrush so that we can get that taken care of the same way we would mowing. And the mowing contractor will take care of those, it's included. The ones where it's personal property, we have done the administrative citations. It becomes difficult with some of them that that doesn't work. They don't really care that they've been fined. They don't really care that they have that due, but we're probably going to make some changes to that as well. We're probably going to bring forward a charter ordinance so that we can make a few changes to our administrative citations. And then, we're going to figure out a way so that even if it is personal property, we should be able to go in there and clean it up. We have to hold it for a certain amount of time because it's personal property and they see value in it. So, we have to have a place to hold it and a way to do all that, and then that would be abated to their taxes.
I applaud the work that's been done so far, okay? And I know that staff has worked hard on the language on this, but it always comes down to, oops, we didn't quite get this uncovered. I understand that, too.
Yeah.
But, anyway, keep working on it. Let's see if we can't get this taken care of, because I know there's a lot of people that, you know, if they get one of these administrative citations, it's, oh, my gosh, I got to take care of this. And that's ninety-seven percent of the people.
It is.
But then we got the other two, three percent or whatever that are not doing it and refuse to do it, and we can't seem to move forward on that, and that's what I'm worried about.
Well, and just really quickly, every year, the clock restarts. So, at this point in time, if somebody got a notice, this is their first and only notice. After that point, then they become a habitual offender, so I just say that grass is growing right now. So I, I just say that grass is growing right now. If it gets over the threshold, we'll send them a notice. They have a ten day correction, is it ten on that? Yeah, ten days to cut the grass, which is state law. But after that point, if we have to come back after it's been cut, it's, it doesn't go through that ten day delay again. So it'll be a little bit quicker as the season goes on.
Yeah, and I know, but I, I know there's two or three properties out about 138th and Willard that looks like it didn't get mowed at all last year. So. I just want to bring that forward and so that we can work on that somehow or another. I know it's a big job. I know it's a thankless job. Anyway, it's a concern.
Any properties that you see with overgrowth, let us know and he'll go right out.
Amber, while you're, while you're there, not to interrupt Councilman Reeves, but we've also heard from very reliable sources that some of the people to which Bob was referring have taken the attitude, well then put it on, you know, I don't care. When I'm gone, it'll, my kids will have to deal with it. I think that's, yeah.
The administrative citations aren't going to work for that.
Because we, we need to take care of the people around these properties that are, you know, the owners don't seem to bother them, but it sure bothers the rest of the neighborhood and it bothers the value of the properties around. It really does. Thank you.
I'm good.
And we'll go right here to you, Mr. Johnson. Then to me, I'll actually have a couple items here real quick. I'm surprised Councilor Gurley didn't bring this up, but the City Bank Concert's only a little over a month away. So if you have any good quality jokes, you can find my email address on the city website. If you have some that is just terrible, you can find the mayor's that email address as well. Secondly. Well, June ninth. When do we start those, eight thirty? That's right. Also, as a member of Qantas, it's my duty to also mention to you that we're finally getting out of pandemic and we're going to finally have our annual pancake and sauce each day this coming Saturday. This year, we're going to hold it down at the Edwardsville Community Center from seven o'clock to eleven AM, seven AM to eleven AM. Just in case somebody thought I'm at seven PM. We'd be more than happy to have you show up. I can either sell you tickets here or you can buy them at the door. So we'd love to see you show up, either council members or anybody sitting out there in the audience. Next item is, and I know this has been brought up several times and I don't know if anybody else has gotten emails, but again, we're back to the Thriftway store. A lot of people complaining that it's, especially if you live down in that area, the property values. And, you know, are we at a point where we just, I know we've always, every time they sell it, we try to give a little bit of leeway to the new purchasers, but is it time we're going to have to put the hammer down and say they've got to take care of it? It's blighted and it's got to be removed. Would you like to weigh in on that, Mr. Peterson?
I can. You are correct that the site has gone through different property owners over the last several years. We have tried to work with them after initially the council taking a step of finding the building unsafe. That process would have to be re-initiated. Anything to deal with private property involves a lot of steps to determine the issues with it and then to take sort of legal steps on it. So we've met with the new property owners, we've tried to work with them on funding to actually remove the building and believe that is their ultimate goal. I, I did ask Amber earlier to actually set up a meeting with those individuals to figure out exactly what and have that conversation, all of us together, to figure out exactly what our next steps are. So I'm, I'll be happy to report back on that. But I think anybody that's driven down Oak Street can one, see the, visually the issues of it, but visuals don't always equate to being able to go in and remove the building. You've got to find the structural issues and everything else, the unsafe, which I believe are visible as well. So again, I, I don't, it's kind of an over, over explaining that a little bit, but ultimately I think we're, we're at a point where we're going to be reaching out to them and having some hard conversations, some frank conversations about what to do with that building next. And, and I'll be happy to report back to you all exactly how that pans out.
I think we'd all appreciate that very much. And then last but not least, it's, I'm going to bring up a subject that is a tough, tough subject for everyone that's up here. It doesn't involve a lot of money, but it has been talked about for the last several years. And unfortunately, is it time to maybe start thinking about at some point in the near future, looking at a raise for the council and the mayor and bringing those up a little bit more in line with other communities around us? I've been having Ms. Breaker, our city clerk, put together some numbers for me. She has gotten input from several communities, she's got a few more she'd like to. And, but it might be something to start thinking about as a council. And I know those who have talked about have also said not doing it immediately, but doing something where it falls at an election cycle. And of course, for those who were only elected a year and a half ago, unfortunately, they would still be voting for something they would be able to take advantage of. And I know it's uncomfortable to vote for, for a raise for yourself, but I think as Mr. Shannon put it, and if he'd like to say it, but I think the last one was in oh six, and I believe you had a statement, I think it was a very profound statement during that time. And I don't know if you'd like me to repeat it as best I can or if you'd like to. Now to, to try to summarize as best I can, what Mr. Shannon said is, it really had to come down with, many of us don't need it, but are there other individuals in the community who would like to serve their community by being up here on city council at some point in the future? But maybe because of financial strains, maybe they're a single parent with children or some other, maybe they have a, their caretaker for an adult they need to have, bring somebody in to watch. It puts a financial constraint on them that they may not be able to participate in their city government, and they would like to. So that's the reason why you would maybe want to look at doing something, not for necessarily ourselves, but for those who might like to serve. So Philly has already left because we would need to find out if, if, if we wanted to do something about it, if the council decides in the future to do something about it, we would probably want to do it in the 2024 budget, which would be next year. Would we have to wait until that budget before we pass any resolution in regards to that?
No, I'd have to look and see exactly how that's established. I don't know if it's a resolution or if it's incorporated as part of the ordinance, but ultimately you can make that effective, whatever date that you would like to. So again, if you wanted to have that conversation now or as Chris gets through some of that research and we can present that back. Again, you could make that January first, 2024, you could make it January first, 2023. Ultimately, it's your discretion whenever that resolution would be passed.
Anyway, so I just want to put that out there for everybody to start thinking about it and maybe, maybe next meeting. And I'd like to have the mayor, of course, definitely involved in that decision and his, his input. So if you want to start thinking about that, and maybe the mayor might bring that up in maybe the next, next meeting or second one out, and we can have a discussion, see what everybody's feelings are on it. That is it for me this evening. There's no mayor here this evening, so I guess there won't be any mayor's items. So there's no questions, no other input. Adhere.